All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Call to order, the December sixteenth, two thousand fourteen City Council meeting. We have roll call, please.
Mayor Dukes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Buckland.
Here.
Councilmember Cleveland.
Here.
Councilmember Ditball.
Here.
Councilmember Gill.
Here.
All right, if we could all please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Buckland, and then the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Cleveland.
You'll bow your heads with me, please. Dear wise and loving Father, first, let me say thank you on behalf of those that are gathered here today. Thank you for this day and the plentiful blessings you provide each of us. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. I pray for your guidance in this meeting tonight. This is a tough time of year. The holidays are descending quickly upon us. And give an assurance of your presence with each of us and what will please you as we serve our community of Yuba City and the greater community of Yuba Sutter. In your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
Luke. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item on the agenda tonight is the California Law Enforcement Challenge Special Recognition Award. And who's going to be presenting that? Chief? Commissioner Stanley. All right? Thank you. All right. Want to go ahead and give you the microphone?
I'll be okay without the mic, Mr. Mayor.
All right, you're sure?
I'm sure. Good to... Thank you for having me.
All right.
Mayor and City Council and everyone else who's here. My name is Assistant Commissioner Warren Stanley of the California Highway Patrol, and I oversee all the field operations. We actually need to have you do it because we record.
Okay.
We need to hear you.
Okay. I oversee all the field operations for the California Highway Patrol. It's a pleasure for me to be here in front of the mayor and the city council and all the guests. I'm here to make a presentation regarding the California Law Enforcement Challenge. And what the California Law Enforcement Challenge is, it started in two thousand three. It's part of the International Association of Chiefs of Police, and it's similar to the National Law Enforcement Challenge. And what the California Law Enforcement Challenge does, it asks law enforcement agencies throughout the state to go into competition and compare their traffic safety programs to other law enforcement agencies of similar size. And they submit their packages, they put them together, they come to the California Highway Patrol. We oversee the program for the International Association of Chiefs of Police. And then they're all judged by a group of judges, independent judges that we put together. And then they're ranked. And Yuba City has been participating in the program since two thousand nine. And in two thousand nine, they won a special award for speed awareness. And in two thousand ten, they took first place. And then also in two thousand ten, they took a special award for bicycle safety. And in two thousand eleven, they took second place. Well, you're about to get your fifth award. You won again for two thousand thirteen. And what I'm here to do is present this award. It's the two thousand thirteen California Law Enforcement Challenge, and it's for bicycle safety and occupant restraint, and it's presented to the Yuba City Police Department Special Recognition. Congratulations. And I just want to make sure that it goes to the people that really deserve it. Sergeant Mike Green, Traffic Division, Dennis Wright, an award. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. And I'd just like to say one thing. The reason the ICP, ICP put this together and we oversee the program, because our traffic safety programs for any police department for the Highway Patrol, that's all about saving lives. And that's what we're here to do. We want to keep people safe. We want to keep them from being injured as they travel throughout your city and throughout the state of California. And that's why it's so important. And it also gives the people, the organizations who participate in it, a chance to look at what other agencies are doing in regards to innovative traffic safety programs. So that's one of the reasons that I, it's such a positive program. And I'm very proud to especially be in here headquartered in Sacramento to have some of the agencies here in the Sacramento area that have done so well. Speaking of that, I have with me the chief of our Valley Division, Willie Goldinas is here, and his assistant chief, Scott Gillingwater. So thank you very much, and I very much appreciate it. Congratulations. Thank you for being here tonight. And thank you for allowing our department to participate in this program. And thank you, gentlemen, for doing such a great job. And next, if I could have Captain Greg Dickerson come forward.
I'm gonna let you hold this tonight.
Congratulations to Captain, Fire Captain Greg Dickerson on his retirement from Yuba City Fire Department. Greg has been with the city for over twenty-four years and started in April of nineteen ninety. He's held the ranks of firefighter, recruit, firefighter apparatus, operator, acting captain, and fire captain. During his career, Greg Dickerson contributed to the growth and success and professionalism of the Yuba City Fire Department and their profession. Greg's accomplishments during his tenure are too many to list, but here's just a few of them. Participating in the department's advanced technical rescue team, the CPR team, the Technical Emergency Medical Services Team, held the position of instructor for the Fire Regional Occupational Program, served on the Fire Department Safety Committee and Joint Apprenticeship Committee, and provided guidance as the department's health and fitness coordinator. That's just a few of them, right? There's more listed here, but I'm not going to read them all tonight. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, John Dukes, Mayor of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire City Council behind you here and the citizens we serve, do hereby congratulate Fire Captain Greg Dickerson on the occasion of your retirement from the Yuba City Fire Department.
Would you like to make your work?
No, but I guess I will. Thank you. Wow. Thank you. Thank you all very much. Oh, goosebumps. It was actually about twenty-five years ago this month that we started with the testing process. It went very smoothly. And in my interview, the division chief at the time asked me, "Why Yuba City?" And I told him, "The department offered a lot of opportunity, but the city reminded me of when I grew up and where I grew up, and appeared to be a good place to raise children." And I was right on both accounts. And I'd like to thank the council, the department, my wife for supporting me. Thank you very much.
All right, now it's time for public communication. You're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments and conversational items may be limited for large groups and encouraged to have a select representative to express the opinions of the group. Do we have anyone who would like to speak? Stephanie, please go to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Can they hear me? Okay, this'll just really be brief. I wanted to, and it's a good day to state it, too. I didn't know if you are aware that there's a problem in the military, the veterans community with suicide, twenty-two a day. And yesterday, one man made a difference. And we know that at least one thousand nine hundred and eighty lives will be lost because of him. Name Senator Colburn, because he blocked a bill that would have helped the problem. One man stopped it. Eleven Republicans, ten Democrats. The entire Congress supported it unanimously, but it couldn't go past one man. However, one person, joined by others in our community, can make a big difference on that. One of the differences will be coming to our city, Yuba Sutter, the twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth of January through the third of February. I'm going to tell you a little bit briefly about that program. This, I'm sorry, I'm not good at technology. It's little, it's basically an RV for dogs. Air-conditioned, heated, holds up to twenty-two, but their purposes holds nineteen. It's owned by K-2, who has a contract with DOD and the Marines to train dogs for IED and EDD, plus a lot of other things, and most of them are classified. Well, anyway, the same trainers that train dogs for our government and other governments throughout the world will be coming here. Sometimes it pays to be a squeaky wheel and to be a prawn who won't say no, but our veterans here will be helped for free. First fifteen, and I'll expand that. We'll be able to get training with canines, not just giving you a fish or the zen of fishing with a fish, but how to catch it, cook it, clean it, identify it, and everything else for the rest of your life. That's the way with canines, with equine. Two principles are started, hearts for heroes. One of them, Key Burns, was because of a personal suicide that happened in her family from someone who she had known since childhood. And she couldn't stand not doing anything and joined with other like-minded people and male health professionals who were her friends. And we get the benefit of that. First vets will be any vet, old, young, combat, or not. It doesn't matter. Somehow, when you work with the dog and you're training them, and these are kill shelter dogs that were trained, first seventy-five percent of the same people will come out with dogs that are more expensive, I can't even, than most houses. But the dogs save lives there, and they'll save lives now. Anyway, I just want to say that they will be coming out to our area at the end of January, beginning of February, and you can make a difference. You know, just welcome and just think about the problem and how one person can make a difference, just show you care. You can't send a person to war or provide them with traumas without some kind of an outlet to share. If you're young and everything's classified, who can you share it with? Nobody. And you have stuff that's way out of your realm of normal human experience, of course you're going to develop PTSD. There are new cases of PTSD with veterans in their nineties.
Stephanie, we need to wrap things up, so thank you. You always have good causes that you're supporting, so thank you for bringing that to our attention. Item three, do we have any written requests?
No written requests were received.
All right. Appearance of interested citizens. Members of the public may address the City Council on items of interest that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. Do we have anyone who would like to speak on anything this evening? All right, moving on. Item number five, public hearing. Proposed levy of the two thousand and fifteen annual assessment to the downtown Yuba City Business Improvement District. Diana.
Good evening. Darren Gill could not be here tonight, so he asked me to bring this item before you. At the November eighteenth council meeting, the City Council received the two thousand and fourteen annual report from the Yuba City Downtown Business Association and adopted a resolution declaring its intention to levy and collect an annual assessment for calendar year two thousand and fifteen in the downtown Yuba City Business Improvement District. At that time, a public hearing was set for tonight, and so staff is requesting that you conduct a public hearing. And then if approved, adopt a resolution confirming the annual report for the Yuba City Downtown Business Association and levy the assessment for calendar year two thousand and fifteen.
All right, thank you. Is there any questions of staff at this time? All right, at this point, I'd like to open the public hearing and invite anyone who would like to speak on this item to step to the podium. Seeing no one, close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for action. The mayor.
Yes, I'll move the recommendation to adopt one and two.
All right, have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Done. All right, motion carries. Welcome. Item number six, ordinance for rezone, RZ fourteen dash zero one, located at three four six Walton Avenue, applicant Parm G. Baines, property owner Stellar Scripps, Inc. Diana.
Aaron Bush could not be here tonight, so he asked me to bring this item before you.
You're filling in tonight for everyone, okay.
And so this is for property located at the northwest corner of Franklin and Walton. It's changing the zoning classification from two-family residential R1 district to community commercial district. This was brought to council on November eighteenth, so this is actually the second reading.
All right. Any questions of staff at this time? All right, and do we need a public hearing on this one also, Diana? Or is this?
No, it's not calling for the public.
I think I'm reading, okay. All right, entertain a motion with the council.
So moved.
Motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Not, motion carries. All right. Next item, consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that the council votes on the motion unless the members of the City Council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to have an item removed?
I'd like to have seven removed.
All right, item number seven. All right, removed, or you want to, for discussion?
Mainly to say that I'd abstain.
Well, we care. Okay, understand. All right, well.
We could.
We could do it.
Better practice.
Understand. All right, let's take the consent calendar, taking item number seven out. Do I have a motion?
Moved to approve, eight, nine, and ten.
Seconded that motion.
All right, I have motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, now we'll go back to item number seven, and I would entertain a motion.
Moved to approve.
Second.
All right, motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained?
Abstained.
All right, two abstentions and three ayes. All right, item number eleven, financial report for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. Robin Vertegna.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Too tall of a stack, I need to set some aside. Tonight, I will be presenting you with a final financial report for fiscal year thirteen fourteen that ended on June thirtieth. First, I will review the results of operations for the city's general fund and then move on to the city's water and wastewater utility funds. This is a summary of the general fund budget versus actual, in thousands of dollars at the highest level possible, including the beginning fund balance as of July first, two thousand and thirteen, total revenues, total expenditures, and fund balance remaining at the end of the fiscal year. The original thirteen fourteen budgeted expenses that were included in the adopted budget totaled thirty-five point two million. To that, the city during the fiscal year added another one point five million of appropriations approved by City Council. Included in that were grant-funded appropriations of a million and twenty-nine thousand dollars, prior-year purchase order encumbrance commitments of three hundred and three thousand eight hundred, the ICMA study of police and fire operations for eighty-nine thousand nine hundred, strike team overtime of one hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred, and a reduction in other items totaling fourteen hundred, which brought the total final adopted budget expenditures to thirty-six point eight million that you see up there under the final budget column. Actual expenditures ended the year at thirty-four point two million, under budget by two point five six million. The savings includes two hundred and fifty-nine thousand one hundred dollars in outstanding purchase orders that will carry over in the next fiscal year. So from a budgetary standpoint, those dollars have in essence already been spent. Seven hundred and twenty thousand one hundred dollars in grant-funded programs, which once again will carry over in the next fiscal year. They are kind of like capital improvement program budgets, where the grant doesn't necessarily end as of June thirtieth. The appropriations carry over into the following fiscal year, so the conditions of the grant can be met and it can be completed. So what I would categorize as the true savings for fiscal year thirteen fourteen is more accurately described as one million five hundred and eighty-seven thousand four hundred dollars, which still represents a very significant savings of budgetary dollars for fiscal year thirteen fourteen. To break that down, about sixty-nine percent of that was from salaries and benefits. Thirty percent was from material supplies and services, and only one percent was from capital acquisition items. The savings from salaries and benefits, you'll see some more details a little bit later on. And the savings occurred across almost all departments and all line items of the budget, and I'll show you the details of that also in some later slides. We ended the fiscal year with an uncommitted fund balance equal to twelve and a half percent of the city's fiscal year fourteen fifteen budgeted appropriations. This is a summary of the city's Economic Stabilization Reserve Fund. It shows you the status at the beginning of two thousand and ten, the replenishment of it, and kind of where we've been through the years. It includes how much of it was used to fund deficits in fiscal year two thousand and ten, eleven, through fiscal year twelve, thirteen, and how much was added to the Economic Stabilization Reserve from operations this year during fiscal year thirteen fourteen. The balance that was added to the ESR for thirteen fourteen was higher than anticipated when I put together the budget projections last year in April and May to bring forward to you for budget adoption for fiscal year fourteen fifteen. Finance anticipated that that amount that you see of six hundred and thirty-six thousand one hundred and thirty-three would be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I looked back to see where did I miss the mark when I put together the projections, and it was a difference of about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. It was attributable to two hundred and twenty-five thousand on the expense side and two hundred and fifty-five thousand on revenues coming in higher than what I had originally projected at budget time. On the expenditure side, the departments had missed the mark by an average of two hundred thousand dollars the previous two years, where they had ended up spending more by the end of the fiscal year than what they had projected at budget time. So I added two hundred thousand to the projected total citywide expenditures for fiscal year ended thirteen fourteen as a contingency. This year, they were right on track. They came in under their projection by twenty-five thousand. So kudos to them. I did let them all know that I expect them to be just as close on their projections for fiscal year fourteen fifteen. We'll have to see how that works out, but amazingly close overall when everything was all netted out. On the revenue side, building permit revenues were higher than projected by a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, and recreation programs were eighty-seven thousand higher than projected. This goes all the way back to inception of the city's Economic Stabilization Reserve Fund and shows you what was utilized for operations for each of the years that we've had to tap into our reserves to cover our budget deficit. And then in the current year, for thirteen fourteen, the amount generated to show you once again the ending balance of the ESR. When it was replenished in fiscal year eleven, twelve, to coincide with funding the city's projected deficits of the three-year period of employee contracts that we negotiated, during the first two years of the three-year agreements, positions were left vacant intentionally in order to determine if the position was really needed, what was the impact on the organization if we didn't fill it. And we took our time filling positions, so we never used the full deficit amount as adopted in the budget. We never used the full ESR amount for the deficit we had savings each year. This fiscal year, what we saw was that we have more vacancies. We've got people that are retiring younger because of the city's retirement plans, and it's taking us a little longer to fill the positions. When I put together the staff report for tonight, we had a vacancy factor of twelve and a half percent. And I know Human Resources was working hard to get recruitments completed and get people hired and put into place and serving the public. It just takes, it's a timely process. We also want to hire the right people. With that said, what I saw in fiscal year thirteen fourteen is we had more salaries and benefits savings than what we've had in the past, and I'll show you a graph of that in a little bit. You can see how the trend has been from year to year. Since fiscal year oh eight, oh nine, the city contributed a total of six million three hundred and fifty thousand in reserve funds into the ESR. Of that amount, we've spent about one point eight million, leaving the remaining four point five million that you see here. The city's long-term fiscal plan anticipates that the deficit will continue until fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, after the city's pension obligation bonds are paid off. Revenues are growing, but so are employee benefit costs for retirement, healthcare, and workers' compensation. It is anticipated that the ESR balance shown here will be used to fund deficits until the budget is in fact balanced again. Having a surplus in fiscal year thirteen fourteen is more of an irregularity than a reality. I attribute it mostly to the vacant positions saving one point two million because we hadn't filled them fast enough. We just couldn't keep up with it. As personnel are hired to provide services, that savings will not be reoccurring. It is one time in nature. As an example, the city recognized the recruitment and retention issue with police officer positions and worked towards finding ways to fill those vacancies, including creating a recruit position whereby the city sponsored two candidates through the academy. So I think the city's also getting creative in how we're recruiting personnel. In these revenue slides, it's the top general fund revenues for the city. If you look at zero to a hundred percent, if the bar crosses the hundred percent and there's no light blue line, that means that we receive more than a hundred percent of budget. If you see a slice of blue, like you do for business licenses, it means we didn't quite receive our total budget amount that was projected. Property tax revenues were less than budget expectations by seventy-three thousand eight hundred dollars or point seven percent of the amount budgeted. I looked at the details of that to see why. We had projected a two percent increase, and assessed values were up one point nine five, real close to the projections. And it had to do with two components that underperformed. The interest allocated to the city from the county on the property tax dollars, which is frankly expected because investment returns are very, very low these days. The yields the city sees on our portfolio, as Spencer will show you here in a couple presentations, very, very low. So I wasn't surprised by that. The other one that did surprise me, and I want to look into it a little further, has to do with the state property tax that they pay us in lieu of vehicle license fees that we used to get. That only increased by point eight percent. And I think there's a lag time there between when the state shows us the money and we see the increased assessed values. Sales tax, including the Prop one seventy-two sales tax share and the Master Tax Exchange Agreement payments to Sutter County, ended the year a hundred and eight thousand or one percent higher than budgeted. We had a projected a modest increase of only two percent, and the average increase in the fiscal year on a cash basis for sales tax revenues was two point eight percent. So we exceeded our budget estimates there. And I think I remember telling council, at the time I provided you with the budget presentation, that if I was too low on one, I would be high on the other, but the average of the two would even out. And they really did. If you look at the budget versus actual projections for the two, I think we're within about ten thousand dollars. Franchise fees were forty-six thousand two hundred more than budgeted, and I looked at that to see why. The receipts were higher than anticipated from Recology and AT&amp;T, whereas Comcast was slightly less than what we projected. Business licenses were two point seven percent less than budgeted, or twenty thousand nine hundred less than budgeted, but was forty thousand one hundred more than the previous fiscal year.
Robin, good question. What were the three on the franchise fees?
Recology and AT&amp;T. Recology and AT&amp;T were higher than what I had projected, and Comcast was slightly less. PG&E was right in there with what we projected. Yeah, I didn't comment on it because it was right, right where it was expected to be. Yes, we did. This slide is set up differently. It goes all the way out to two hundred percent of budget because of building permits. So if you look right at the midpoint, that's the hundred percentile. And anything that the whole bar goes beyond that point, we received at least our budgetary projections. Recreation revenues were about sixteen thousand more than budgeted and eighteen thousand nine hundred less than the previous year. Hotel motel surcharge revenues were ninety-six thousand one hundred more than budgeted and twenty-two thousand six hundred more than the previous year. I looked at the details of that to see why, because that was considerably more than what I had anticipated. And the increase is attributable to an overall increase in the revenues citywide for people staying at our hotels. But it was interesting to see too that our twelve thirteen receipts were inflated due to catch-up payments from a couple of hotels that were delinquent, which is why I lowered the budget estimations for thirteen fourteen. I didn't expect to see that again. And I compared all the different hotels we have in town that are paying our hotel motel surcharge to us to see which ones were up and which ones were down, and a couple of them were up pretty significantly. It's clear that they're getting a lot more patronage than they did previously. The CSAG revenues are related to the fire services that are provided in the former unincorporated area, formerly known as the Walton Fire Protection District. Those were about seventy-six hundred higher than budgeted, so right along with budget expectations. Building permit revenues were four hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred dollars more than budgeted or a hundred and eighty-seven percent of the amount budgeted. And this was three hundred and ninety-five thousand nine hundred more than last fiscal year. I looked to see why the increase was due to primarily the activity and one other component. There was an increase in both residential and commercial building permits that were issued during thirteen fourteen, and the commercial permits issued included In Shape Toyota and the Kingsbury Expansion. There was also a big increase in solar-related building permit activity. In fiscal year twelve thirteen, solar-related permits totaled eighty-seven thousand. In thirteen fourteen, this grew to two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, an increase of a hundred and seventy-two thousand over the previous year. This shows you the history of the city's total property tax revenues. It's labeled in millions of dollars for the past eight years fiscal year oh six oh seven through thirteen fourteen. This slide shows you that revenues peaked in oh seven oh eight and continued downward at a steady decline until fiscal year twelve thirteen, at which time they slowly began to increase again. I added this in, and I don't know how well you can see the very, very small actual dollars of average prices and median sales price. This is something that's provided to the city on a quarterly basis by HDL, our property and sales tax consultants. I watch these pretty closely because it tells me kind of what the housing trends are doing. And as housing prices go up, so do our property tax values and our recoveries of our Prop eight reassessed values that have been reassessed downward. This shows that the average price and the median price of homes, by looking at the lines in the chart, you can see that home sales prices are on the rise again and in two thousand fourteen are back equal to the sales prices in two thousand eight when they were on their way down and equal to two thousand and three when they were on their way up. So when I look at that, it's an indication of property tax dollars in comparison to the overall economy locally and what we're seeing with our property tax revenues. Okay? Yeah. Wow, I'm impressed. Very good. Those numbers are very smart. Moving on. This is a similar slide for the city's total sales tax revenues for the past eight years. Shows that revenues declined significantly for several years and then began recovering in fiscal year ten eleven. Sales tax peaked in oh five oh six at total sales tax revenues of eleven million one hundred and twenty-five thousand six hundred dollars. Comparing thirteen fourteen with an actual amount of eleven million eighty-four thousand eight hundred dollars, sales tax only remained down by forty thousand eight hundred. And I'm pleased to say that the fiscal year fourteen fifteen budget includes sales tax projected eleven point four three million. So I fully expect that we will bypass and exceed at the end of fourteen fifteen and have our highest sales tax revenue year yet. And the budget amount is projected on an increase of three and a half percent for fiscal year fourteen fifteen.
Robin, one question on the property tax. I know it's back one slide, but, or two slides, I guess it is. On, on the property tax, does this typically lag a period of time from the market? Or is it pretty reflective of what the market actually is doing?
There is a lag because assessed values are as of January first of each year. So in January first of two thousand fifteen, the assessor will look at values and set the rules based upon those values. So even if the market goes up significantly after that, it's not going to change the values in the rule. And we don't actually see those revenues until February of the following year. So for the values of January two thousand fourteen, we collect those revenues beginning a whole year and a month later is when they actually hit our bank account. So it is a significant lag.
And we did what, two point, how many, what was the increase over last year? You said two point?
The assessed value increase was one point nine five.
One point nine five. Have we projected for this coming year, or do we have those numbers yet?
Yeah, I have a projection in the budget of four percent. And the preliminary assessed values, which are not final yet, I don't believe they're final. Actually, they may be final because usually the final values come out in October, six point two percent. So over what I projected.
Thank you.
You're getting ahead of me. I'm giving you fourteen fifteen financial report in February. This is a slide of the city's quarterly sales tax results on a cash basis. Something I share frequently by email, and then when I present to city council. I'm pleased that there's mostly positive numbers up here, only three negative numbers. That was not the case several years ago. So we've definitely seen a change for the better with our sales tax data. The cash basis is really important to me because that's what shows up in the city's bank account via direct deposit that I can use to pay the city's employees and pay the city's vendors with. There's always adjustments made by Board of Equalization because somebody pays late or there's a misallocation and it's allocated to the wrong jurisdiction. And it eventually is caught by our sales tax auditor, HDL, and made right where the cash flow is adjusted in the long haul based upon these adjusted numbers. The adjusted numbers are very important to see, and I apologize. I thought I picked this. This is actually point three percent and point two percent. I'm not sure why they reverted back, but that's incorrect. Jumped off the page when I looked at it here, so my apologies. Those numbers are not correct. They're point three and point two percent decline. That said, the cash basis will eventually, the audit results will eventually catch up and the cash adjusted amounts will reflect what the adjusted basis is. The general fund expenditures this year, ninety-five point seven percent of the budgeted amounts of salaries and benefits were spent. That seems like it's a high number. It really isn't. That's kind of the lowest I've seen it in a long time. This is down from fiscal year twelve thirteen where we spent ninety-seven point eight percent and fiscal year eleven twelve where it was at ninety-eight point seven percent. So it is a big reduction, and I mentioned that we had about one point two million in unspent appropriations for salaries and benefits. I looked back to see what it was in previous years. It's about double this year. In previous years, it was more in the order of magnitude of about six hundred thousand. So we're definitely seeing the impact of vacancies on the city's overall budget. Eighty-nine point four percent of budgeted amounts for materials, supplies, and services were spent. The ten point six percent which wasn't spent amounted to eight hundred and thirty-five thousand in savings. However, that has to be adjusted for grants and purchase orders which will carry over into the following fiscal year. So the real savings at the end of the day is about five hundred and fourteen thousand. Again, total savings were about two point five six million, but the real savings after deducting the encumbrances for purchase orders outstanding and grants more like about one point five, one point six million. This graph here, even though it's very squiggly, the green line on top shows you the trends for salaries and benefits as a percentage of total budget expended. And it shows that in recent years, when budgets have been really hold-the-line budgets, departments have gotten closer to spending all of their budget dollars relatively speaking until this year. This year, you can see the green line for salaries and benefits and the yellow line, the dark yellow line for materials, supplies, and services. Excuse me, I've got that wrong. The second line up here, the gold line is for total budget, and the yellow line is materials, supplies, and services is really trending more downward because of the savings this year. I don't expect that to continue into the future. This is on a department-by-department basis and shows you the savings. I show this without subtracting the encumbrances or the grant carryovers because this amount is what you will see in the comprehensive annual financial report that's going to be presented by myself and reviewed by the city's auditor next. And it's important to me that the information that I'm providing to you coincides with what they're providing to you. But I also need you to know that this does include those other items as not being spent, and they will be spent next year. The two departments, if you will, that went over budget, the fire department, warrant administration, and finance midway through the year that they would be over budget for salaries and benefits due to their constant staffing model and the need to cover shifts for a variety of reasons when they have somebody out on medical leave and backfilling with overtime. Medical leave, vacation, sick leave, et cetera. The other amount that shows as over budget in contingency and non-departmental was due to training and professional development that was authorized by the city. On a citywide basis, the entire city for the general fund lives out of a pooled account. We added budget dollars to that in fiscal year fourteen fifteen, recognizing the importance of development of city staff. And this is a line item by line item. It shows you the individual categories within the city's budget and how much savings was generated or how much that item went over. And because we've held the line on material supply and services budgets, the things that have gone over such as heat and power, travel, and meeting, and postage, and freight, those have not been increased in anybody's budgets. If they go over in one line item, they're told to make it up with savings someplace else because we look at the bottom line dollar for each department, not the individual categories. The second page of it, because we've got lots of different categories where finance tracks the expenditures on a citywide basis. Something I do want to call your attention to. This five hundred and twenty-three thousand savings down at the bottom. Almost looks like we're budgeting for dollars and not spending them. I assure you that that is all grant-related programs that will be purchased and bought in fiscal year fourteen fifteen. It's all carryover dollars. It's not money that is just there and not intended to be spent. And those grants are police and fire-related. This is a comparison of the city's citywide retirement costs and includes not only what we pay to CalPERS, but also what we have to pay for the debt service on the city's pension obligation bonds. And it looks kind of like the cost didn't go up that much in fiscal year thirteen fourteen, so I looked to see what they would have been had we not had the vacancies. And on a citywide basis, they would have been approximately six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars higher. The general fund would have been about three hundred and seventy-two thousand higher. So the vacancies also cut down on the retirement cost. The city budgets for retirement costs based upon the rates provided to us by CalPERS in the actual reports, we know for every dollar payroll how much it's going to cost as a percentage contribution to CalPERS. But if we don't have somebody sitting in the seat and paying them, we don't pay CalPERS, which is part of the reason CalPERS has modified their actual reports. And in some cases, it's going to start charging us a flat fixed fee for some of the contributions because they're seeing that too. With vacancies, they don't get as much in contributions as what was anticipated when they put together their rate structure.
Robin, one other question on that. Also, the furloughs impact this too, is that correct?
Yes, they do. These costs would be ten percent higher if not for the furlough because if we're not paying the payroll, we don't pay the PERS on the payroll. This is an overall historical perspective of the city's revenue and expenditures, with revenues in blue and expenditures in the yellow color that you see with the dollars associated within each of the bars. What it shows is how much the city's contributed from the ESR at the very top to cover the deficit beginning in fiscal year oh eight oh nine, the city's first deficit year. And I changed the color for fiscal year thirteen fourteen to show the gold that we contributed back to the ESR because revenues exceeded expenditures for fiscal year thirteen fourteen. Unless there's any further questions related to the city's general fund results, I'll move on to water and wastewater.
Any questions and stuff? Go ahead and continue, Robin.
This is a summary of the budget versus actual for the city's water utility. It includes the operating revenues, grant revenues, capital connection fee-related revenues, the SRF surcharges, along with total revenues. This sixty-six point seven percent looks pretty awful. It's just because, again, grant revenues span more than one fiscal year. So if you look at our grant revenue budget of eleven point nine million, only three point five of that was received. And it wasn't even actually received in cash by the end of the fiscal year. It was accrued as receivable because we had spent that much and we're waiting for reimbursement from the state for that. The actual revenues from operating revenues, I looked to see how much we took in compared to what we budgeted for actual charges to our user customers. And those were half a percent more than budgeted. They exceeded the budget amount by one thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Very, very close to projections. Other revenues were higher than budgeted by forty-nine thousand six hundred dollars, and that was related to water sales revenue and a rebate from PG&E for energy efficiency improvements. The revenues here are only shown through June. It was during the ensuing summer months that the city began implementing the water conservation education programs in response to the severe drought. That's when our revenues really started to decline. I saw the peak month in October where conservation had reduced consumption by twenty percent and revenues by thirteen percent. And I'll be providing you with more detailed information on that when I bring forward the mid-year financial report for fiscal year fourteen fifteen in February. But staff does continue to monitor those. The capital connection fee revenues in the water fund are four hundred and fifty-five percent of budgeted. Those are disproportionate in comparison to the sewer fund capital connection fee revenues. Staff looked into that to see why, and what we found was that several commercial construction sites, including Sierra Central, the courthouse, and the new John L. Sullivan dealership, paid for their water connection fees during construction and typically had more than just one connection fee that they paid because they also paid for a landscape irrigation meter in addition to the regular water meter. Additionally, the water construction, water connection fee was paid during construction, but the sewer connection fee wasn't paid until just prior to occupancy, so there was a delay there. Operating expenses ended the year at ninety-two point five percent of the budgeted amounts or five hundred and forty-four thousand three hundred less than the budgeted amount. Compared to fiscal year twelve thirteen, I was like compare one year to the next to see what the trend is for expenditures. Total operating expenditures were three hundred and eighty-three thousand more this year than Uh total operating expenditures were three hundred and eighty-three thousand more uh this year than they were the year before. This is the city's water debt coverage ratio. We look at the city's total revenues, um both operating and capital. Subtract the city's operating expenses, come up with a net amount and then divide uh debt service to determine what our capacity is for continuing to make our debt service payments we commit in our bond documents that we will maintain that ratio at one point two or a hundred and twenty percent. You can see from the bottom debt coverage ratio that we have more than maintained that every year. The budgeted amount for fourteen fifteen is higher at one point nine four. With the conservation we're seeing, I don't anticipate it going down too much. I expect it'll stay right about one point eight percent because we never spend everything we budget either. Um but revenues for the water fund will definitely probably be less than what we budgeted. And again, I'll provide you more information in February on that. The other item of consideration I just want you to be aware of is in fiscal year fourteen fifteen, revenues include one point six million in capital connection fee revenues that are not anticipated to be recurring, that have to do with the two hundred and twenty connections related to the Prop eighty-four water line project that we'll be doing. So in future years, you may see the budgeted amount with that um going down some as a budget amount. But still expect the actual to come in probably right in line with what it's been historically. This is the city's wastewater utility, shows you the summary of budget versus actual for it. Revenues ended the year at a hundred and three percent of the budgeted amount with actual revenues being three hundred and thirty-five thousand more than budgeted. So pretty close when you're talking about a budget of millions of dollars. Capital connection fee revenues were two hundred and forty-nine percent of the amount budgeted or three hundred and ninety-five thousand more than budgeted. And that's due again to the construction activity that we've seen with both residential and commercial construction. Operating expenditures were eighty-four percent of the amounts budgeted. The savings equated to one point four million. I was um looking at the details to see where the savings was originated from, what categories, and it was pretty much spread throughout. Five hundred thousand with salaries and benefits, heat and power, a hundred and forty-six thousand. Professional services, two hundred and twenty thousand. Operations and maintenance, a hundred and sixty-two thousand and chemicals, two hundred and thirty-six thousand. So anytime we can save, we certainly do. I'd be nervous if it was all in one category. I'd wonder what was going on, but when it's spread throughout, it doesn't make me feel at all uncomfortable, especially when I compare it to the previous fiscal year. And this year, the um expenditures were down forty-seven thousand from the previous year. So not a significant change when you're talking about mi- millions of dollars of expenditures. And I do also want to mention that the salaries and benefits, which are approximately eighty percent of the city's general fund budget, very different in the water and wastewater funds. They're more about thirty-three percent of the budget. So a much smaller amount because the operational costs are so much higher. With that, are there any questions?
Any questions? I do have one question, Robin. On the capital there, where it was two hundred and forty-eight point eight percent more than what was budgeted. Uh is that impact fees or connection fees? Is that what that is?
That is.
So does that go to retire bonds uh once we get that extra money or what is that money? Does it go into the general fund here?
No, it does not go into the general fund. It stays in the capital connection fee account uh fund. We have a separate fund that we use for maintaining that and um is used for either projects that need to be built that are driven by new development or used to pay debt service on the outstanding bonds that were used to construct something that was needed because of new development.
All right, thank you.
And I apologize, I think I jumped ahead of myself. The debt coverage ratio for the wastewater fund. Didn't mean to leave that out. We do also meet our debt coverage requirements on the wastewater fund even more so than we do on the water fund.
That's still the one point two also, right?
It is. Yes, it is.
All right, any further questions? All right, thank you, Robin.
You're welcome.
All right. Yes, we're moving on to item number twelve. Or did we get that one here? That was the the CAFER.
Yeah, that's me too at first.
That's you too. So you get to stay up there for one more. So the comprehensive annual financial report and related audit reports for fiscal year ending in June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen.
I have to start off by saying, isn't this cover awesome?
You did a very nice job on it.
I can't take credit for it, but I I really like it. Uh in accordance with state statutes and city ordinance, the city has an independent audit conducted on an annual basis. Copies of the comprehensive annual financial report, AKA the CAFER, where and related reports have been distributed to city council and placed on the city's website. And I'll go over my report in two categories. One is fiscal results, the other is audit results. As it relates to the fiscal result, results, that ties into the presentation that you just saw. So I'll keep it really brief and say that the general fund ended the year by adding six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars to its economic stabilization reserve fund from operations. Uh the city's updated fiscal policy is to maintain a fifteen percent reserve with the general fund. The unassigned reserve balance in the CAFER as of June thirtieth was four million five hundred and thirty thousand or twelve and a half percent of fiscal year fourteen fifteen, uh general fund appropriations, which is shown on page twenty-two of the CAFER. The ESR balance was four million five hundred and forty-one thousand. And if you combine those two, we more than exceed our fifteen percent requirement even though we've committed the ESR to fund our deficits over the next several years. As far as the audit results and summary, I'm very pleased with the results of the audit for fiscal year thirteen fourteen. On page one of the CAFER, the city received an unqualified opinion once again. And that's the highest or best possible audit opinion that you can get from your auditors stating that our financial statements are fairly presented. In addition, as part of their audit, they evaluate the city's internal controls and issue a separate management report identifying areas that they recommend staff make changes or improvements. Uh the management report has three types of recommendations. There are either a material weakness, a significant deficiency or other matters. I'm pleased to report that we had no material weaknesses. That's kind of the worst kind of recommendation that they can give you. I mean, something of a very serious nature is wrong and that you really need to get it corrected immediately. Uh their recommendations do not include any of those items, any material weaknesses on internal controls. The second type of a recommendation that they can provide to us is a significant deficiency. They did have one of those where they, a significant deficiency is a deficiency or a combination of deficiencies in internal controls that is less severe than a material weakness, yet important enough to merit attention by those charged with governance. And during the audit, they did uh disclose one they determined was a significant deficiency to us. It was related to a recommendation that check numbers be added to the cash register tape at the police department and that cash receipts uh not be locked in the cash register at night. In addition, they um found some receipts from both police and fire that were not remitted to finance in a timely matter, which they define as one week or less. So we're working with the departments to make sure that they get their receipts submitted to finance um several times per week at a minimum. And that finance rings them up in our registers in a timely manner. The third type of recommendation, other matters, um they involve recommendations that are designed to help make the ci- to help the city make improvements and achieve operational efficiencies and reflect the auditor's desire to be of continuing assistance to the city. Uh this year's report had nine of these types of recommendations. Of those, one area has already been implemented, corrective action is already complete. Seven of those recommendations are in the process of being complete and implemented and one of them won't be implemented. And city staff has included a response in the management letter indicating the explanation as to why on it. And with that, I would like to introduce Derek with Moss, Levy and Hardtime so he can give you his comments with regards to the city's audit and make him available to you to answer any questions that you might have. This is Derek with Moss, Levy and Hardtime.
Thank you, Robin. Uh Derek Rampon, Moss, Levy and Hardtime. I was the audit manager on this engagement. Robin covered a lot of the stuff I would have covered, but I'm going to just touch on a couple of key points she already actually mentioned. Page two is our audit opinion, it's the best opinion possible, clean audit. Uh so congratulations on that. That's very important to have for your funding sources and just for compliance issues in in general. Uh the other item I usually mention is the uh budget versus actual, which she also talked about earlier uh for the general fund. And that starts on page eighty-three of your CAFER. As you may or may not be aware, we're here for three weeks out of the year with a staff of four to five people. Uh we go around to different departments other than just finance. We'll reach out to each department, look at our cash receipts, visit them, see their policies and procedures, make sure that they're sound and uh following best practices. Uh and uh we really do take a look at policies and procedures. And that's why you'll notice in our report, some things may seem minor, but we like to bring them up for efficiency and and proper safeguarding of assets. So that's one of the points of the audit and we like to include those things for the governing body to uh be able to see what they, we found. Um other than that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Derek. Any questions of Derek or Robin?
No, I don't think I have a a question, just a maybe a comment and Robin has to do with um their required reporting for unfunded liabilities when it comes to pension. And um maybe including somewhere in there a summary or written summary of um what that is. I I see all the lines. But that takes probably a master's degree in in uh finance to be able to to understand exactly what that means in plain English. And for the purposes of transparency for the public, uh that's one of the questions that we're constantly getting. So just something along those lines, um you know, just a uh just a plain English summary of it.
Real quick, uh so next year will be the Gatsby sixty-eight is being implemented for um statewide or uh federal wide. So there will be more details, uh especially in regards to that. That's the big topic. So um you know, this year we could, we can provide something, but next year it will definitely be in the CAFER. So you'll be able to read it in plain English.
Thank you.
There is a note disclosure, not that it's written in plain English. The governmental accounting standards boards dictates what we have to put in here. So that's what's in here. So that we can go for our awards programs that we participate in. Um and I agree with you, it's very convoluted.
I'm not, not being critical, I'm just, just.
No, I, I, I agree with you. I really do. The best place to find the unfunded liabilities, in my opinion, is probably the actuarial reports. It's, it's more plain English there and I can't believe I'm saying that because it's written by an actuary, which actuaries are almost as bad as CPAs. I can say that because Derek, because I, I'm one too. Um with that, if there's no other questions, I would ask you to please accept this and file it. Um I always like Derek to come, if nothing else, to make him accessible to you all so you can ask questions directly of the city's auditor. If I don't bring him, I feel like I'm potentially not making him accessible, which gives the appearance that I'm hiding something.
Through the mayor. Yes, just a comment, Robin. Uh congratulations to you and the staff once again. And you know, being on the council year after year. Um you guys do a fantastic job. And one of the things that I've noticed being on this council is how conservative you are in your projections. It's always better to underestimate, come a little bit higher with numbers than it is to uh you know, come up higher on the numbers in the sense this is what we're going to do and you come up low with revenues and then we have a huge issue. Uh so congratulations. And then also with Derek, I'll be able to audit these books. And that's just a second uh information that that you guys are doing a good job. So uh congratulations to you and your entire staff.
Thank you very much.
I was gonna say with that, if there isn't any, I'll make a motion. I think this is just a note and file on this item, but.
Yeah, not on the CAFER, it's not, except the comprehensive annual report.
All right, with that, I will. Item number twelve. Item twelve.
A second.
All right, a motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
I apologize. I think I said that you needed to note and file it. I was
Yes.
thinking of my financial report that I did previously. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
That was an hour ago.
It actually says on here to note and file too, so. All right, uh item number thirteen, uh Spencer. The presentation of the investment report quarter ended September thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight I bring before you the treasurer's quarterly investment report for September thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, as you just said. And in the first quarter, at the end of the first quarter, our market, market value of our investment portfolio was sixty-eight point two million. Of that sixty-four point two million is uh city held. The remainder is trustee held, uh district bonds. Uh there is a fifteen million dollar decrease uh in the portfolio. And that's due to liquidating cash-like investments uh in anticipation of large uh flood control agency invoices. Those invoices did come through. We spent the money. Uh the, the project uh spent about thirty-one million dollars in the uh in that quarter. And so uh consequently, in October, you'll see in my uh next quarterly investment report how the flood control uh was reimbursed and and the money goes back into the pool and such. So uh so there is a fifteen million dollar decrease there. There were sixteen investments that matured or sold and eleven were purchased. The average yield on the sold investments was point six seven four percent. And the average lead yield purchased is one point two, three, four percent. So I'm happy to uh report it going in that direction because it hasn't always been that way. And the city held composition, uh the different types of uh vehicles, investment vehicles the city's uh pooled investments are in. Be uh agency bonds is the largest uh, the largest amount, about thirty-one percent. And that's uh Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac and the like. U.S. Treasury bonds, eleven percent. Uni bonds and state bonds, about eight percent. Corporate bonds, about twenty-three percent, that's the orange. And uh seventy-three percent of the portfolio in total is in bonds. And then in more uh, more liquid uh investments, local agency investment fund, LEAF, about eight percent. And cash, money, money market funds and other cash-like investments is about sixteen percent. So making twenty-seven percent of the investment portfolio, uh non-bonds. Because we've hit you three items in a row with investments and finance. I'm gonna offer to uh turn the floor back over to you for questions.
All right, thank you, Spencer. Any questions from the council for staff?
No questions.
This is a note and file then. Move on to item number fourteen. Item number fourteen is appointments to the city of Yuba City Boards and Commissions. The vice mayor and I met earlier this week and spent the afternoon interviewing individuals for uh the planning commission, economic development, parks and rec and the senior commission. And I will just start at the top with the uh planning commission. The first one was Michelle Blake, second was George Parker and third was John Sandbrook. On economic development, we had Dave Burrows and Greg Heckman. Parks and rec, we had Charles Anderson, Sharon Foot and Cindy Shetswell. And on the senior commission, a returning member, June Bone. So that is our recommendation. Like to get a motion from the council.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, excellent, unanimous. All right, move on to item number fifteen. All right, um I would like to make one recommend, recommended change on this one. I was listed as the representative for the city under the Sutter Animal Services Authority. And I've asked uh council member Preet Dival if she would uh take that assignment. And is there any other questions on the assignments that were posted here? Probably not. All right, so uh again, um on this one here, there is, need a motion to approve the assignments.
Make a motion to approve the assignments.
Um and with the, the adjustment of, okay, so motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carried. All right, item number sixteen. Reports from the city council. And let's start with um since this is wrong on here, we'll start with uh council member uh Cleveland. Do you have any reports? This is your first meeting, so you probably don't have a lot on your. This is your first meeting, so you probably don't have a lot on your... All right, and council member Preet Dibbal.
It's my first meeting as well, so I've met with staff. I had the pleasure to meet with most of everyone and enjoyed it. I have lots of nighttime reading. But very familiar with the process already, being part of public administration for over sixteen years, so it comes kind of second nature. It's just learning the individual of all of our numbers here and getting familiar with those. But as far as the process of HR budgets and so forth, it's, we're used to it. So thank you very much for taking the time, for those of the staff that are here, for sitting down with us.
Council member Gill.
I don't have much to report. Did attend the Sutter Butte Flight Agency Finance Committee meeting, so a lot of stuff going underway, trying to get funding lined up for the upcoming year, trying to make sure that we get paid from the past billings that are being billed. I was not able to make the meeting itself, but I believe council member Buckland or vice mayor was asked, and I believe he was able to make it in my behalf, so I know there's a lot going on, so.
All right.
That's all I've got.
Thank you, and finally, Vice Mayor Buckland.
Attended open house for the Yuba Sutter Economic Development Corporation along with council member Dibbal. Open house, they've moved locations to nine fifty Tharp Road, thirteen oh-two suite, whatever their suite is. You'll find it, big printed letters on the front. Nice new facility, should serve the needs of the economic development very, very well, especially for our area. And it was well-attended by the public. Also, very same night, turned right around, and Preet was also at the Chamber of Commerce, their annual meeting, and also the introduction of their new board members. Next night, I turned around, went to the police department's Christmas party. Officer Oakley was selected as Officer of the Year for the Yuba City Police Department. There'll be a celebration of all of the officers of the year in February at the Yuba Sutter Fairgrounds. Attended SECOG Government Relations Affairs Committee meeting. Really nothing of significance to report from that meeting other than just tracking where some of the legislation in the next year will be headed. Boards and commissions, just thank you to all the citizens that applied, that took the time to fill out applications. We couldn't fill, we couldn't select every one of those individuals, but it was a qualified group of individuals that want to serve this city and continue to be invested in our community, and I want to thank them. In place of our outgoing mayor, Cash Gill, attended the Sabuka meeting or flood control meeting. Happy to report that our levees are at flood protection. They just need a little bit more work on them. As they, as they said that at that meeting, there's dirt between Yuba City and the river. So that's, that's good news. And attended the stroll on Saturday. Many of us did. Attended the stroll. Had a great time down there, well-attended by the community. It was packed. Really hats off to Fautine. Oh, she left. But hats off to the whole organizing committee and Downtown Business Association, everything, to bring that together and present Yuba City in such a wonderful light, and especially at this time of year. That's all I have to report.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor Buckland. I had the privilege of attending the commander's open house out at Beale Air Force Base with Colonel Dudley and his wife, and celebrate Christmas season with them. And then that was on Saturday, and then attended the Sutter County North Sacramento Valley Integrated Water Management. Regional, yeah, that one. Anyhow, it's a long name, but attended that on Monday, and which you will be serving on that now in the future, and and that's why you were put on that, because you have some experience with that. So there were some bylaws changes that were voted on at this meeting. It was an important meeting to be at. It's a large committee. It has, I believe, seventeen or eighteen members on that board. And sometimes getting a quorum has been an issue, so they're looking at dealing with how do they deal with that. So we voted to streamline that a little bit for you, so. Understand. And then also attended the Sutter Butte Flood Control Board, and there actually is a little bit more than just dirt between us and the river, but our levees, the core of the levee, the slurry walls that keep us safe. We do have two-hundred-year flood protection at this point. It's now dressing off the top of those levees with the rainstorms that came in. It kind of held us back at finishing that up, and we're just waiting for good weather in between to finish those off. So, but we are perfectly safe because the slurry walls are what are protecting us. And let's see here, had Mosquito Vector meeting on Thursday. Nothing to report out of that. And then, of course, attended the Christmas stroll on Saturday, and it's nice to see the community come out and celebrate together. It seems to be growing each year. It's a wonderful event. I'm glad that we've expanded the hours to the early afternoon so that families can bring their children, and they don't have to be out there late at night with little ones, although I did see a few of them, but... Well, it wasn't as cold as it has been in years past. It was actually pretty nice, so. But I'd like to thank all the council members that did attend that and support our Downtown Business Association. And then I'd like to close our meeting tonight in honor of Henry Miller. Henry Miller has been in this city for a lot of years. And his son, John Miller, served on the city council and his mayor, I believe, two terms. And a very active member in the community, and I think Henry worked right up to the day he passed on. So I would like to close tonight's meeting in honor of Henry Miller. And with that, meeting is adjourned.